That it is, but here we are in October. Before we get started, I want to go to Nathan, who's joining us virtually this evening to introduce our newest, the newest membership, member of our leadership team. Nathan, you're muted. Or you don't have audio. Maybe we'll come back to you. Okay, we'll come back to you. We're gonna, we'll do that another time. Yes. Um, all right. With that, we'll go ahead and, I know what you meant. Go ahead with the roll call, please. Mayor Dexter? Here. Deputy Mayor Carr? Here. Councilmember Meyer?
Uh, present, but virtually.
Councilmember Miller?
Here, in person.
Councilmember Sherman Warren?
Here.
Councilmember Schwab?
Here.
Councilmember Suggs?
Here.
Manager West? Manager West, we see you there. Tony Bloor?
I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. If you can please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We do have a proclamation this evening, so I'm gonna head to the front. And Tanya, if you can join me, that would be great. This evening, we have a proclamation. Recogni- recognize, sorry, gotta use the microphone. Recognizing the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we're joined by Tanya Green, who's the CEO of the Lower Awal Clough tribe, and Emma Bankson, who is also from the tribe. Thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation. A proclamation recognizing the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the city strives to promote tolerance, understanding, and friendship, and to combat prejudice and eliminate discrimination. And whereas the city of Port Angeles recognizes that it sits on Clough ancestral lands and recognizes that Clough people have lived here, lived on this land since time immemorial. And whereas the city values the many contributions Indigenous people have made to our community with their knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural influences that have shaped the character of our city. And whereas the city of Port Angeles recognizes that systemic racism toward Indigenous people perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating health, education, and social crisis. And whereas the city of Port Angeles joins the state and a growing number of cities that have permanently recognized the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, creating an opportunity to promote appreciation, tolerance, understanding, friendship, and partnerships among all the, among all peoples. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day is a day to learn, to observe, to create, and to connect. The Port Angeles School District's curriculum fosters an education that is diverse and that honors Clough culture, among many others. The city recognizes Peninsula College, is offering Clough language courses. This, along with the work done by the district, will continue to support students' learning through enrichment activities and a rich curriculum. Whereas, on July 21st, 2020, the City Council adopted ordinance 3660, adding chapter 1.30 to the Port Angeles Municipal Code, declaring the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Port Angeles. This ordinance will long be a valuable addition to the code, and we look forward to paying our respects to the historical importance this day represents, not only on that day, but every day. Now therefore, I Kate Dexter, Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles, do hereby recognize October 14th, 2024 as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Port Angeles, and encourage all of, encourage all to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the Indigenous peoples of our region, to learn more about the history of Indigenous peoples and their cultures, and to continue efforts to promote the well-being and growth of our Indigenous community. Thank you. Joseph Henry? I already asked if they wanted to say something, and they said a handshake would be great. So, thank you for coming. All right, do we wanna try Nathan's audio again? Yes, excellent. But we can't see you, so. If you wanna unmute your camera. If you can, if you can do both, that's even better.
Hopefully you can hear me and see me now.
We can, we can.
Counsel, I'm very excited to introduce all of you to Public Works Director Scott Curtin. Scott has just moved to Port Angeles from Alaska. We're extremely grateful to have Scott on board. As you know, we recor- recognized the retirement of Mike Healy, our prior Public Works Director at our last meeting. We're sad to see Mike go, but really excited to have Scott on board and look forward to all of council, as well as those members joining us in the audience this evening, having the ability to get to know Scott better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nathan, and welcome, Scott. We look forward to working with you. And if it doesn't go on consent, you have an item on tonight's agenda, so we'll get to hear from you, too. Um, all right, that brings us to our public comment period. I don't have a sign up sheet. Is there one for tonight? If you are online and wish to make a public comment, as a reminder, first public comment period is regarding items on tonight's agenda. So if you are joining us virtually and wish to speak, this is the time to raise your hand. And we will start with folks in council chambers. Okay, we don't have anyone signed up. Is? Oh, we should do that, yeah. Um, don't have anyone signed up, but the clerk reminded me. For folks who may not have noticed, there is a change to our agenda, so I will go to, I think Calvin, for a staff lead item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, we're gonna tag team this year. I'll go first, and then the city manager will speak to the second one. So first of all, I want to apologize to council. There were two items on the agenda that need to be revised. So earlier this morning, the council received an amended agenda, and the specific specificity of that earlier correction was to move what was item G1, Municipal Code Update, MCA 2488, from G1 on the agenda to now F2, a public hearing. And that revised agenda was sent to you all electronically earlier this morning. There's a subsequent modification of the agenda that I'll turn to the city manager to describe.
Thank you.
So Mayor and council, I do apologize for this one as well. Unfortunately, we do have a conflict relative to item F1 on your agenda, which is the 2025 utility rates. And what you'll find is in the memorandum, it intended that council pass the resolution this evening, following a public hearing. Unfortunately, we aired in the agenda, and the agenda stated that we would recommend that council continue the public hearing to the next meeting, as well as only do a first reading this evening, and then have a second reading on the meeting of October 15th. Considering that error by staff, I do recommend that council honor what was published in the agenda. And with that in mind, that we actually do, in fact, do two readings, which we don't normally do of the resolution, but that we go ahead and do two readings, passing that resolution at your next meeting, and continuing the public hearing to the next meeting as well. So there will be two opportunities to comment in the public hearing, both this evening and again on October 15th. Hopefully that is helpful clarification, and again, my apologies for the oversight.
Thank you. I can take some ownership of that, since I also see the agenda early and did not catch that either, so apologies. So, we do have two public hearings tonight, so there will be an opportunity to speak to both the utility rate, the utility rates that are in the packet, and also municipal code update for minor deviation for permits and conditional use permits. So, any late items from council? Okay, I don't hear any. So no one signed up for public comment, but if anyone is interested in making a public comment, you can come down, and we'll go in order. I don't have any hands online. Eric, you can go after John. And just as a reminder, though I don't know that John needs it, but for anyone else who's in the room who hasn't spoken at public comment, your name, you need to state your name, and whether or not you're a resident for the, for the record. And then if you're in council chambers, the lights will keep track of your three-minute time. Go ahead when you're ready, John.
Yeah, so I'm assuming because of E8 business licensing, that's appropriate for me to talk, Madam Mayor? Okay, great. So my two or three concerns is that you have a flat rate for business licenses, and that certainly that it not exceed a number that's like $150. I'm concerned if you get into some revenue situations, that potentially people are not gonna wanna disclose that information, and/or it might prohibit or stop somebody from wanting to come here and do business. Two other items with regards to that. I recognize there's a couple hundred people that participate with the BLS program. Two of them are rather close, Squim and Port Townsend. I think it'd be wise for the council to find out what kind of revenue Squim and Port Townsend have received over the past five years. This may be a know-nothing type thing to try to enact, and it really doesn't generate much revenue. The second part is, what kind of statistical information are Port Townsend and Squim receiving? And what benefit has that brought to the city council or city staff with their decision-making process? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Eric, go ahead.
Thank you. Eric Marks, I am not officially a resident, but I'm here a lot now in the Port Angeles wharf. I came down to speak about the business tax, and I was all wound up, and I rate by the business community and ready, but I'm not gonna speak against it, because I spoke to Calvin two hours ago. And my community was wrong, and Calvin was right. This is kind of a nothing situation when we, it's got a misnomer, it's not really a business licensing tax. It's really, what it is, is a business franchise tax. It's a small fee for the privilege of doing business in Port Angeles, and it's so small that I think it's irrelevant. In material, fine. Very important to me, Calvin told me, it's a couple, it's less than $300. $300 for the biggest, and under $100 for the smallest, probably not set yet. Most importantly, Calvin reassured me administrative burden is zero. There's nothing else to do other than what we already do at the state level. So, if that's all true, I got no opposition to it. But I'm gonna take a chance to tell you what I was gonna tell you, which is that the two, number one and number two concerns on the recent comprehensive plan survey were economic opportunity and affordable housing. In my opinion, small business is the conduit to economic opportunity and affordable housing for a lot of people. For some people, a graduate degree is that path. For most people, in this community especially, because most people have a graduate degree, they're not here anymore. Small business is that path. It's the path up from being an hourly wage earner to being an equity owner. And when you're an equity owner, you have economic opportunity, and economic opportunity or money makes housing more affordable. So, you might ask, as council, what can you do to facilitate small business, if you think I'm right? The answer is nothing, but you can do a lot to hurt it. So I just urge you, be careful. Don't stand in the way, because those are the number one and number two things this community wants, and small business is the path to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any hands online still. Anyone else in council chambers wish to speak? All right, there is the opportunity at the public hearing for those two issues, if people want to speak to that. So, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? Sorry, I did it backwards. I don't see any hands raised on, I don't see Brendan having his hand up, and I don't see any hands here. So, Drew, you had your hand up, I'm assuming too, based on, is there something you'd like to add to consent?
I do want to point out real fast, a typo for the September 3rd minutes. It has Schwab made a motion, and then Schwab seconded for excusing Member Meyer from the meeting. I've already brought that up to staff and have been told it's gonna be corrected, so we should be able to accept the minutes as amended by staff without any further changes. With that, though, I would like to add H1 to the consent agenda.
Let you listen on, we'll get consensus.
I just bumped my microphone.
Okay. Just H1?
I figured we'd do them in order.
Any opposition? That's fine. Any opposition to adding H1? Brendan, are you able to turn your camera on so we can do unanimous consent?
I'm here, I could just say A or something. Yeah, my camera doesn't seem to be working, so.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll just vote then. That's fine. But do you have opposition to adding H1?
No opposition.
Okay.
I2?
I'm good with that.
Also opposed to I2? Okay.
J1?
Okay.
And okay with that.
All right.
Those were the ones that I was interested in adding.
Okay. Anything anyone else would like to add? Nope, okay. Then I will go ahead and read the consent agenda. The City Council Minutes of September 3rd and September 17th, 2024, Expenditure Report from September 7th, 2024 to September 20th, 24, in the amount of $1,584,895.81. Prosecuting Attorney and Law Enforcement Radio Use Memorandum of Understanding, Crisis Team and Peninsula SWAT Interlocal Agreement, Wastewater Treatment Plant Digestor Gas Blower Purchase, Material Purchase Electric Meters, Pilot Program End of Distribution Line Voltage Meters, Department of Revenue Business License, Licensing Services Contract, Stage 4 Water Shortage Declaration, 2025 to 2026 Strategic Plan, The Planning Commission Appointment Recommendation, and Downtown Tree and Sid- did you add J1? Yes. Downtown Tree and Sidewalk Replacement Phase 3, Project TR0918, Change Order Number 2. Any comments, questions, or a motion to approve? Lindsay, go ahead.
So I just wanted to verify from the public comment that the Department of Licensing Agreement is really just the next step in moving forward with the business licensing structure. It's not setting rates for those licenses, or the rate structure and what that would be.
Counselmember, that is correct. It would require a follow-up discussion and approval of the council of an amendment to Title V, and then a corresponding change to the master fee schedule. If council decided to proceed.
Any other? Go ahead, Navara.
I was going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second? All right. Because Brendan's camera's not working, can, we'll do a regular vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, hearing no opposition, the motion passes unanimously. And we have 10 minutes. Let's go to H2. So, for those of you who are, because I see some new faces in the audience, I just want to let folks know. When we have a public hearing, we designate 6:30 as the start time for that, and we want to honor that start time in case people come specifically to speak at the public hearing. So, I'm gonna rearrange the agenda just a little bit to try to get some other things done while we wait for 6:30 to start the public hearings. So let's go to H2, that's the Resolution on Lodging Tax Policy and Fund Dispersment Scoring Criteria. Calvin, you want to take that?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, you'll find this information starting on page H17 of your packet. On August 1st and September 26th, 2024, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee reviewed, revised, and recommended approval of changes to Resolution 08-23. The resolution provides lodging tax funding guidance through dispersment categories, funding priorities, and scoring criteria. A new section of the document is also provided, provides procedures for LTAC regular meeting schedules and the annual budgeting RFP process. Tonight's recommendation is to pass the resolution adopting revised policies regarding the application and budgeting of lodging tax funds, and second, authorize the city clerk to make any grammatical and formatting revisions to ensure internal consistency. And I will soon be joined by planning supervisor Ben Broderick, if you have any questions, with an assist from the deputy mayor, who is also the chair of LTAC. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Calvin. Any comments or questions from council? Or a motion? Latricia, go ahead.
Well, I didn't have any comments or questions, but I will make a motion to pass the resolution adopting revised policies regarding the application and budgeting lodging tax funds, and authorize city clerk to make grammatical and formatting revisions to ensure internal consistency.
Second? Lindsay, before I call on you quickly, I always get this, forget, I even flagged resolutions and ordinances, but I'm gonna read the resolution really quickly. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, amending lodging tax advisory committee policies by adding lodging tax funding program goals and priorities to the policies. Lindsay, go ahead.
So the lodging tax is this weird thing where we collect a tax from overnight accommodations, and then it goes into this fund of about a million dollars a year. That is one of the more discretionary funds in the city's budget. And it's not discretionary, but it does have a lot of flexibility by state statute. And it's supposed to increase overnight visitors to the city. And so we're only measuring, to me, one part of what the tourist economy is. And yet, it kind of drives this process in a way. So, I don't know, let me explain where I'm going with this. I had a lot of opinions about this document. I had some good meetings, including a very long meeting with Deputy Mayor Carr, who's chair of this committee, who talked me down from extensive motions tonight, because this is going to come back to us in March, hopefully, or I guess be picked up by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee in March, and come back to us at the council with a kind of a more comprehensive set of recommendations. So, I'm gonna share my thoughts here, because it's on our agenda, and, you know, this is a decision by the council, but the advisory board is gonna try and wrestle with this first. So, I don't want to get in the way of that too much, but I do have one specific amendment that I'll make at the end. So, part of the challenge here is that by state law, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, which advises us on how to spend this money, is riddled with conflicts of interest. You have to have people who, who collect or who use this fund on that board. And they're some of the basically few, two of the five voting members on that board. And there's a lot of, I think, disagreement maybe on how to best use that money. So, two things are important for me to think about how we use lodging tax money. One is the concept of carrying capacity, and the other is the concept of rate-limiting step. And I don't mean to sound wonky or obsessively policy-oriented here, but when we think of our tourist economy, for me, it's places people stay, things people do, and places people eat. And if we don't have enough things to do at a certain time of year, it doesn't matter if we have a bunch of lodging and a bunch of places to eat, people aren't gonna come. And the same for the other two. That rate-limiting step idea is, you know, what is the thing we need to increase in order to build the tourist economy in Port Angeles? And then carrying capacity is kind of the flip side of it. What is, what is not, what is limiting our ability to grow as a city? So if we have a ton of tourists in town in the summer, and all the restaurants have two-hour waits, it's not a great tourist experience. If you have a four-hour wait getting up to Hurricane Ridge, not a great tourist experience. We can exceed our carrying capacity if we don't think strategically about these different things. Then there's also the issue of the tourist economy being very seasonal, and just summer, and not year-round. And how do we build a year-round tourist economy in Port Angeles? So that we're not looking at a lot of the service jobs in the tourist industry being temporary, summer-only jobs, where people move away and then come back, try to refind housing, good luck in, you know, May or June. And, you know, how could we build that out? In the last few years, we've had an organization start up in Port Angeles that dramatically changes the possibilities for the tourist economy in Port Angeles, and that's Field Hall. And I think we need to rethink how we're doing the lodging tax allocations based on Field Hall now being here in Port Angeles, and having the potential to bring conferences in the winter, and build out the need for hotels, other lodging options, restaurants, and maybe even other things to do, that people are gonna have come here from out of the area for. So, I think Field Hall changes the game for the tourist economy in Port Angeles, or is what key piece in moving there. And I'd like our lodging tax guidance to reflect that more. I don't think it does that now, but I'm assured that we're gonna move more in that direction next year. So, one of the areas that we need to work on, and I'm still trying to understand how much we have the authority to do this, there's a lot of provisions in the state law about what King County can do with their lodging tax and workforce housing. It's a little unclear to me what we can do with our lodging tax and workforce housing. But hopefully, we look at allocating some of our lodging tax toward making sure we have more workforce housing in Port Angeles. Another thing I think we should do is the city administrative costs that come with managing lodging tax, we should be applying for lodging tax funds for that. I know that takes away from it, but the city is, is cashed out there as well. And while my friend made a comment that there's nothing the city can do to, you know, help small businesses, I disagree. I mean, I think there's so much we do in infrastructure and providing the landscape of the city. I was just on a road trip across Washington State, having spoken and speaking at a conference, stopped by this amazing town, Conconally, where we expected to land and stay at a cafe and do some internet searching and route plan. Turns out, there's no cellphone service in this town. And it's like, okay, well, we're moving on. Sorry, we don't even know where the restaurants are. So, there's a lot that we can do in providing the backbone and infrastructure to create that economy in the first place. I think the city should apply and pursue that. I also think we don't need more events in the summer. We already have a huge event, it's called Olympic National Park. It's in bloom, it's wild out there. Everyone wants to go there. That's why people are coming here in the first place. We don't need to create more events in the summer, and I think being clear about that would be helpful for applicants to not apply for events, or not try and increase the, basically the competition for scarce hotel rooms, lodging rooms, places to eat out in the summer already. We don't need to expand that part of our tourist season. We need to expand the shorter seasons in the winter instead. I would like, this is a pretty minor change, but very clear dates for the application windows and funding contracts. I think the current proposal says that it'll be after the city council passes a budget. Let's just make it clear when that window's gonna be, and we can pass the budget at the right time to make sure that we meet that, that window. Otherwise, I think it just favors existing applicants who are in the know, who like, know how this procedure works. And I think part of, you know, as we're talking about small businesses and startup projects, is being able to not have to know how to, how the system works in order to get in and play it, play in that system. And then there's some stuff here about meeting procedure rules. We currently have a subcommittee with Mayor Dexter, councilmember Schwab, and myself working on the, the code section with standing committees. So I think what we'll do is just move those meeting procedure rules into that section so that that gets codified, because part of that section says that we're not gonna have other sets of rules in other places. So we'll just assume that this is placeholder for now, and we'll move that in. The change that I'd like to propose to what's, what's before us today is about the operation requests may not exceed 100,000 in a single year. And I could look for that section, but I'm not gonna find it fast while I'm talking. It is on page?
Page 22.
H22, yeah. And so it's specifically under the funding priorities for non-events, which is allocated, well, for this section, tourism-related nonprofit business operations is allocated at 33%. There's a proposal to add a new restriction, which is operation requests must not exceed $100,000 in a year. I want to move to amend, well, I move to amend the main motion to change operation requests must not exceed $100,000 in a single year to instead read, quote, "Operation requests must not exceed 15% of an organization's annual budget," end quote.
Second? All right. Lindsay, you sort of spoke to your, do you want to articulate a little bit more about that, and then we can?
Yeah, so specifically, I mean, different organizations have different funding needs, and 15% of an organization's annual budget, I think, would better reflect the variety of needs that an organization might have there. And fifteen percent of an organization annual budget, I think, would better reflect the variety of needs that an organization might have there. I think it allows larger organizations to apply for a larger amount. Small organizations can apply for up to fifteen percent of their budget. Thanks.
All right, Navara, did you want to give your hand up? Go ahead.
Yes, well, obviously, this is a committee I am the chair for, and I I feel really good about the document that we have before you that our committee created. The Lodging Tax Committee is made up of a lot of really opinionated people, myself included, and I think it makes the committee better. We have a lot of three-two votes, and I'm the deciding vote on a number of them, which, you know, makes me really feel for our mayor. It's not always a fun place to be in. And, but I think there's a lot of us on that committee that we have all of these, you know, we have a lot of just like really fun discussion and argument, just like we have on council. And I think we have a better product because of it. I also really want to thank our staff for creating, really writing down the meeting procedures and the application procedures. Because these have been the longstanding policies that we, as a committee, have been enacting for many years now, but there's been nothing in writing. And so this really helps to to really, I mean, to make it very clear, not just to the committee members and council, but also the applicants, what they can expect. And I think it, I think it's a better document because of it. And I'm obviously not on the subcommittee that is working on those things, but I think it's lovely to have them folded in and, and I think, I think it's very positive. To the motion itself, I think, I went to I think it's valuable to talk about why why there is a must not exceed number for the operations request specifically. Lodging tax is a really difficult committee to be on because you have really high highs and low lows. On the one hand, you get to fund organizations that do so much good in the community and provide a lot of opportunities, not just for tourists, but for community members. But on the other hand, you have to tell a lot of organizations no and that they won't be funded because of a wide variety of reasons. And a lot of it is that there are more organizations that want funding than funding available. And that's always a tricky place to be. And so there's sort of this element of trying to figure out what is the best balance for appropriately funding these organizations. And I think there's like certainly substantial disagreement. I personally am fine. I was a part of the committee that created this document. We were, I think, all in agreement, I'm looking at Ben in the back, all in agreement that we agreed with the $100,000 in a single year. And part of that is because I think, I think our committee recognizes that, you know, there are smaller organizations that rely on operations funding. There are larger organizations that also apply, and some of their requests greatly exceed the number, the like the dollar amount that we have allocated towards funding at all. And we believe, I think our committee is in agreement that we need to provide appropriate guidance to our applicants so that they know what we feel is an appropriate number for them to apply for. And I think part of this is being community minded and acknowledging that we all exist together. All of the nonprofits that are being funded exist together. And whether or not some of them have more impact than others, like I still believe that it's valuable to fund some of those smaller organizations that have smaller budgets. Because I think they do bring in tourists and they've been doing good work. And for some of them, they've been doing it for a long time. So I think I am happy to enter to, I seconded the motion, first because Lindsay and I had a long conversation today, but also because I think it's valuable for our council to have the ability to think, think this motion through and to provide opportunity for a discussion for it. And, but I thought I would sort of provide that history and context about why why we are interested in having a cap. And I think whatever that cap is, I'm happy to have that discussion here at council.
I clearly underestimated how long this was going to take us. As long as we're shortly thereafter, we're okay. All right, we'll go to Amy and then Brendan.
Thank you, and I appreciate this amendment and the suggestion. However, I'm not going to support it. I think through an equity lens, I don't like it because fifteen percent of a larger organization's budget is going to be larger. And so I think it puts the smaller organizations or smaller events at a disadvantage when we do it on a percentage base. And as somebody who has been involved in writing of grants, knowing like knowing that sweet spot of what to ask for is also really helpful. So I, I think I like the document as proposed on the agenda.
Thank you, Amy. Brendan, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just going to second that. I appreciate Navara going through all of the reasonings and how this document came to be and how difficult it was sometimes to really get to the consensus to find out where it was. For that fact, I will also not be supporting the amended document and I will support the original document as presented. Thank you, Navara.
Thank you, Brendan. Drew, go ahead.
I'm going to be in agreement as the last two council members. I do appreciate the background information, as has been said, because that does give me a little bit of insight of the thought process there. And I do think that there needs to be, even if it's a, we recommend not requesting more than X percentage of your operational budget. I am concerned that opening it to only fifteen percent will be too detrimental for particularly smaller events and of that nature. I do recognize that we have limited funds and we need to stretch those. And I also recognize that I'm not on LTAC, so I don't always know exactly how it operates. But it seems like if we're very concerned about that, we can award lower amounts requested. Am I wrong in that assumption?
You're correct.
Okay, so if that is a concern, it seems to me that instead of a fifteen percent cap of operational budget, because it does look like we're just talking about the operational budget, not the event budget, but capping it at fifteen percent. I mean, cap it at a hundred thousand and then, cool, awesome, your entire budget, there was only $4,000, so we're not going to give you $50,000. That's just part of the metrics that the LTAC unfortunately has to go through. But I do plan on supporting the document as was originally presented.
Latricia, did you want to speak? I couldn't tell if you had your hand up. No pressure to.
No, no, I just kind of, my question is, I am still wondering about the fifteen percent and the benefit of that. In my mind, I'm just trying to clarify what the benefit is, is Drew talks about, you know, the actual operation. You're preventing an entity from coming in and asking for 100% of their operation costs and kind of relying on them to come to the table also to make the event successful. So I don't know, maybe Lindsay can kind of clarify for me what, why fifteen percent? I guess, because I am leaning towards why not 100,000 and just let LTAC deal with, you know, sort it out amongst themselves. But I also, I think I, I think I understand what you're getting at, but I'm not quite there yet, Lindsay. So I just kind of, maybe you could clarify why the fifteen percent versus 100,000.
Yeah, because we're not looking at the scale of the organizations that are applying here. So Field Hall has a $3 million annual budget. So we're not looking at funding Field Hall at a very sizable percentage of their operating budget if we put the $100,000 cap in there. We look at other cities that have facilities very comparable to Field Hall. And most of them fund a major percentage of their LTAC funding to that facility. We haven't yet gone there as a city. I think we need to. I think it's incumbent on supporting Field Hall early out of the gate. And I think that's a much better outcome than saying, hmm, maybe Field Hall can do it on their own without LTAC funding and then reaping the consequences if that's not true. I would rather gamble hard in favor of Field Hall, and I realize that that might mean other organizations don't get as much funding in their operating. We are only talking about nonprofit operations here in terms of this cap, not events. This motion, this amendment doesn't change the events budget. But I think we're taking a really big risk not supporting an organization that is potentially able to completely transform this sector of our economy locally. And so that's why I think fifteen percent is honestly the better equity decision because it's looking at the actual size of organizations, not just saying, oh, everybody, you know, could fit under this $100,000 cap and have it be a meaningful part of their budget.
Vote to Navara and then Drew.
I just went to respectfully add to what Lindsay said, that Field Hall did apply for lodging tax funds last year and was awarded lodging tax funds, not in the amount they requested. Their request exceeded the funds that we had available for that section of money. But we did fund them. And I think it's important to say that, that it's not as though the council, like the LTAC and the council did not fund Field Hall. We did. But I think the question is at what, what level are we trying to fund them at? And the reality is, as Lindsay said, it will impact other organizations. I also just want to let council members know that we redo this document every year. This is a living document. We go through it every year. In the remaining procedures, you'll see that we start working on it in March. It's getting to council a little later than I think any of us would have hoped. It's like really kind of close on those deadlines, but but that's because we have such a robust committee with people that really care and put a lot of time and effort and work into it. I think at our last meeting, we talked at length about some of the proposed changes that aren't going to make it, haven't made it into this document, but I think our committee is really looking at a much larger, like full scale review of really how our priorities are lining up and what that's going to look like for the future. But I did just want to share with council too, that, as I said, I'm, I'm, I'm going to support this for all the reasons that Lindsay has mentioned. And I think it's valuable to know that, that this document really truly is a living one. And it comes to council every year, comes to LTAC every year, and it comes to council every year. And so and part of that is because we always recognize what went well, what could go better. And there's a lot of nuance to that. And so we will get to see the, the next iteration of this document hopefully in June of next year.
We'll go to Drew and then I, and Latricia, and then I'm going to speak and then we're going to vote.
I appreciate the additional insight from Lindsay. I was looking at it through the lens of fifteen percent of an operational budget for a group that might only have a $2,000 operational budget is more or less pointless. And not looking at it through the lens of one where $100,000 hypothetically is 1% of their operational budget. I would feel more comfortable if the current amendment doesn't pass to instead suggest something along the lines of request not to exceed $100,000 or fifteen percent of their operational budget, whichever is larger. In the event the current amendment does not pass, I intend to suggest that motion.
Thank you. We'll go to Latricia.
Um, no, let's, let's go ahead and move. I like Drew's idea there.
Let's make it easier than having an amendment to an amendment and vote on the amendment and then, okay. Yeah, okay, so we have a motion to amend the main motion.
Let's just, with the chair's consent, I move to withdraw the amendment. Suppose you had Drew, well, then, issue anyone.
I approve. You have my consent. Drew, go ahead.
I move that we amend the main motion so that operational requests must not exceed $100,000 in a single year is changed to operational requests must not exceed $100,000 or fifteen percent of operational budget, whichever is larger in a single year.
Second, okay. Do we need to have any discussion about that? Amy, go ahead.
You said fifteen percent. Okay.
Yes, fifteen. I've been up since four.
One, four, one, five, not one, four. You said four, now I'm going to mess the whole thing up. One, five. Okay. I'm going to see if I can get that right. I mean, I think I'll get the gist of it. Does anyone want to speak to the, okay. I don't see Brendan's hand up either. So we have an amendment to the main motion to change, let me actually get to that. To amend the main motion to include or just give an amendment to the main motion for operation requests must not exceed $100,000 or fifteen percent of the operation organization's operating budget in a single year. Whichever is greater in a single year. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. We now have an amended main motion, which is funny because actually that information's not in the motion. Just why I'm right, or maybe it is, sorry.
Attachment to or exhibit A. So the main motion, or the main motion is to approve the resolution, which is exhibit A is hereby approved and adopted.
Yes.
It's kind of confusing.
That was the main, can you, Carrie, can you repeat the main motion? I feel like what we did was actually just amend. We should just be passing the resolution as amended. That's what we actually did.
We passed the resolution adopting revised policies regarding the application and budgeting lodging tax funds and authorize the city clerk to make grammatical and formatting revisions to ensure internal consistency.
Okay, so I'm going to but we amended the resolution. So we would pass the resolution adopting revised policies regarding the application and budget of lodging tax funds as amended and authorized. So we, I sort of botched that a little bit, but I think we took the right steps to change the language. So I'm going to suggest that we now vote on the main motion, which is to pass the resolution, move that we pass the resolution adopting revised policies regarding the application and budgeting of lodging tax funds as amended and authorize the city clerk to make grammatical and formatting revisions to ensure internal consistency. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Sorry, that was a little confusing. Maybe just for me, but all right, now we will go to public hearing. The first public hearing we have is F1, which is on page F1 of your packet, if you are following along in a packet. And that is a public hearing regarding the 2025, 2026 water and wastewater utility rates, and I'm going to go to Serena for this.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. So we do have a brief presentation planned for you this evening, just to highlight the changes that are being proposed in the water and wastewater rates for the 2025 to 2026 year. So if you just give us a moment, we will pull that up. And so this evening, we will be reviewing the utility rate change review. So we do have a staggered approach to that. So we'll be going over kind of where we are for this next year and the coming years as well. Brief overview of our cost of service analysis methodology, just as a reminder of how these rates are built. And then we'll go over our water and wastewater utility rates. We will have a brief update on our affordability index. And then we'll go over next steps and questions. And so just in regard to that utility rate review, so this evening, we are looking at the proposed water and wastewater utility rates for the 2025 to 2026 year. Next year, next fall, we will be looking at the medic one rates. Those are three year rates. So this will be 2026 through 2028. And then proposed also next fall, we'll be looking at the 26 to 27 rates for stormwater, electric, and for both divisions and solid waste, so collections and transportation. So we have kind of a big year planned for next year, and that's just based on that staggered approach so that council doesn't So we have kind of a a big year planned for next year, and that's just based on that staggered approach, so that council doesn't see those utility rates all at one time for review. And so as we're looking at our COSA, we do have a few principles um, that were established in twenty nineteen uh, during the methodology meetings that occurred between council and the utility advisory committee, and were ultimately adopted for use. And so for our first category of principles, we have our financial um, area. And so really at its core, the COSA is designed to collect enough revenue across all customer classes for the base and usage to offset expenditures. And so we're looking to set rates that will ensure the utility remains stable and that we factor in policies, debt requirements and mandates into the need in addition to the operational and capital costs. Our next category are our customer requirements. And so we're looking to ensure that we're making adjustments that are affordable and that the budget is heavily scrutinized to find savings and provide stability whenever possible. And then finally, our third category is just kind of our our other category that encompasses all of the the things that didn't really fit into either those first two. And so those include conforming to generally accepted rate setting techniques. Their rates are cost based and that they encourage economic development and conservation. And so um, as mentioned, we are using the twenty nineteen methodologies that were approved by council and the utility advisory committee when we're building all of these proposed rate adjustments. Um, when looking at the capital needs for each of these utilities, those are determined during the CFP process. So as we do our capital facilities planning, um, those are then taken after approval and moved into the COSA as an average transfer of the need for the coming years. And and again, that's all built in within that plan. And then we're also looking at our fund balance requirements. And so uh, those need to be met and preserved in accordance with our policies. And so as we're looking at the proposed rates, um, all rates have been averaged over the two year COSA cycle. So basically, we're just averaging those so you don't see a rate in twenty twenty five and then another rate in twenty twenty six. We've taken both of those and averaged them so that they remain the same for the two years um, projected. Um, and when we do that, what we do is we take the twenty twenty five budget and we project that out for the twenty twenty six year, and that's what's averaged into those rates. And then at the the end of each section, there will be examples um, for both the water and wastewater utility um, that will demonstrate the cost increase for our residential customers. And so um, as I mentioned earlier, the COSA is balanced to the budget in order to offset the cost increases that are expected in the coming year. And so while the budget has been carefully reviewed, there are areas that have seen increases for operational needs um, that did result from collective bargaining and um, inflationary impacts that increased the cost for goods and supplies, and that's really occurred citywide. Um, and as we build, review and consider these rates for approval, it's it's critical to balance affordability with maintaining the infrastructure and operational needs of the utility. And that's in order to prevent future more costly impacts to these utilities. And so we're just going to take a look at the water utility proposed rates for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six year first. And we're going to start by just looking at what some of those budgetary changes looked like in our COSA. So uh, what the slide reflects are those budget changes that we did build into the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six years for the water utility. And they're as compared to the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four COSA. And so what we're seeing is a six hundred and thirty one thousand dollar increase overall, or about a seven point six percent expenditure increase. And so uh, we've just kind of highlighted some of those areas where we saw those increases the most. So we have about two point three percent increase in personnel costs, twenty one point eight percent increase in supplies, thirty one point three percent in capital transfers, and that's based on the needs that were identified in the CFP. And twenty three point three percent increase for internal charges. So these are charges from other city funds into the water fund for work that's performed um, on behalf of that water utility. And so overall, uh, what we had for our revenue increase for need for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six is about twenty point four percent. And so I just want to take just a minute to kind of unpack that. So the difference in the revenue and expenditure need um, did occur for a couple of reasons, and so I just wanted to highlight those before we uh, move on. And so the first is um, in order to help balance the financial impacts to customers that resulted from the pandemic, the rates um, for the twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two years remained static. Um, and that was despite the um, increases projected in the COSA. That was approved by both uh, UAC and council. And again, that was to help with some pandemic related relief to those customers at that time. Also, in twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four, rate stabilization was used to help offset um, any increases, again, to provide some customer stability um, during that time. And so as we're looking at our twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six proposed rates, um, we're building back that need into the rates. So it's really to prevent larger increases in the future. So in other words, uh, the utility still has the revenue need for those years that were offset uh, by the rate or by the reserves rather than the rates. And so this is essentially providing that kind of catch up at this time. And so we're going to take just a few minutes to walk through each um, rate type within the water utility. And so uh, the changes to the rates do differ by rate classification, and that's um, as designed in the COSA model in order to charge the classifications according to use. And so um, if expenditures in the budget are specific to commercial customers or irrigation customers or residential customers in this case, um, those costs have been built into each of the categories as per the cost of writing that service. And so what that means is that you'll see a a difference in the percent uh, change increase for each of the categories. And so these next few slides um, are directly taken from the attachment to the memo that's in tonight's packet. They start on page F3 or page eighty seven, if you're looking at um, the packet in the PDF version. And so our residential meters are all the same size at five eighths inch. Um, and we do have the twenty twenty rate demonstrated there, just to kind of demonstrate what what was just mentioned in the previous slide. Um, it's the same rate that was used in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. And so uh, as compared to our current rates, our twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six rates are seeing about a fourteen point seven percent increase to our residential base and about a two point seven percent increase for usage. And so as we look at our commercial rates, uh, these are based on pipe size. Um, and so the increases do range in a according to each of those sizes. So that's from about thirteen point five to sixteen percent for the base and about seven point nine percent for usage rates. And so as we're um, looking at our municipal rates, these are similar to our commercial rates. However, municipalities are not required to pay certain taxes that we would typically build into our our rates. And so as a result, the proposed rate does reflect the removal of those from the costs associated with providing that service. And so we're seeing about a thirteen point five to a fifteen point eight percent increase to the base and a seven point eight percent increase to usage. And then our federal non taxable rates are similar to municipalities that where they are exempt from taxes, and so those have been removed um, from the rate calculation. And we're seeing about a fourteen to sixteen and a half percent increase to the base rates in this area and about an eight point three percent increase for usage. And then our our last category uh, within the water utility is um, irrigation. And so we are seeing anywhere from a fifteen point two to a fifteen point nine percent increase um, for those base rates and a seven point eight percent increase for the usage in this area. And then as promised, this is our uh, comparison where we're highlighting the total costs for our customers. And so on average, uh, we have about a six point six dollar and thirty six cent per month increase for about eighty six percent of our customers. And so that's that's our, based on our heaviest users. So that's the comparable that we're using. That's about seventy six point, seventy six dollars and thirty two cents per year on average. And so that's the increase that we can expect to see from our customers. And so it's always difficult to see these cost increases. Um, but it's also really important to emphasize that staff has worked very hard to present rates that are as low as possible. And so I think that's uh, reflected when you consider the significant inflationary impacts that we've seen over the last several years um, to the city's budget. Um, and that's uh, seen particularly on this slide, but also in some of the other slides as well. We compare the need to the overall cost increase. And so uh, we've done everything we can to lessen the increase to our customers, but we also do have a responsibility to ensure that the utility is solvent, safe and in compliance. And so that's why you're seeing the recommendation for these increases at this time. And so next, we'll we'll go through our water utility proposed rates. And so uh, similar to water, uh, we have the reflection of the change to the budget as was built into the COSA for the twenty twenty five year. Um, so we have about a one point one million dollar overall increase expected of about thirteen point eight percent. And again, that's us comparing to uh, the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four COSA. Um, I do want to note that uh, because we do project the second year of the COSA, when we built the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four COSA, those twenty twenty four projections are uh, we're falling a little bit short in the budget. So that's been built into this as well to kind of keep those fund balances where they should be. Um, and I also want to note that we have a larger customer base that's been spread across all rates since our last COSA. Um, and so essentially, we've had an increase to our overall customer account. And so that's really helped us to keep some of these rates low, and that happened both in the water and the wastewater utilities um, and help offset some of those uh, increases to the individual class rate increases. When looking at our residential rates um, within the wastewater area, um, we're going to go through each of these by category, similar to what we did for water. And so also similar to water, these costs are are tied to the service and will differ by category. So within our uh, wastewater area, our residential rates are dependent on pipe size. So about one, we're looking at about a one to two point four percent increase for the base and about a five point three to five point five percent increase on usage. I want to note that the CSO rates uh, will remain the same. These are tied to our debt payment and uh, that payment has uh, not changed. But we have also um, been collecting enough to cover that payment, so we are not anticipating the need for any kind of an increase for that. And so that will remain the same uh, for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six year. Looking at our commercial rates, we're looking at about a point two percent to a two point four percent increase to base and a five point five percent increase to usage. And then our municipal rates, um, about a point five to a two point five percent increase to the base and a five point six percent increase on usage. And just again, when we're looking at these municipalities, these are exempt from certain taxes, and so those have been removed for this customer category from their costs. Uh, similar to uh, the federal non taxable where the taxes have been removed. So we we are seeing about anywhere from a one point two to three point four percent increase to the base for these customers based on pipe size and a nine point seven percent increase for their usage. And then looking at the rate comparison, and again, this is um, an average of the highest usage categories, so eighty six percent of our customers will see a one dollar and ninety seven cent increase monthly to their utility bill. And that um, comes out to about twenty three dollars and sixty four cents a year. And so again, this is a reflection of staff's commitment to keep those proposed rates in line with our current rates as much as possible. Um, I do also want to note that the reason why you're seeing um, the difference there in the total amount to our customers for our residential categories from water to wastewater is that we didn't use any kind of rate stabilization in twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four. And in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, these rates were increased in line with uh, what was presented with the COSA. And so we're seeing more gradual increases instead of a larger increase that's occurring this year. And so I did just want to provide what that combined increases for both of those utilities. So it's about eight dollars and thirty three cents each month with a yearly cost of about ninety nine dollars and ninety six cents. And that's again, for both the water and wastewater utilities combined. Um, as far as utilities and for next year's budget, the these are the only increases that are planned in the budget at this time. And so um, it's important to note that total increases to our average customer um, on our residential side is about a hundred dollars a year. And then um, we do have a recommendation from the utility advisory committee that uh, they did consider these rate adjustments at their September tenth meeting. And they did send a favorable recommendation to city council for the approval of the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six water and wastewater utility rate adjustments. And then finally, just in closing, uh, we just wanted to take a few moments um, to provide you an update on our utility index. And so that's something that we do every two years. Uh, we just finalized some of these numbers last week, and so we will be providing a more formal uh, written document, but we wanted to provide the updates here, just recognizing that we are talking about affordability with our rates as well. And so just as a reminder, we do have sixteen comparable cities that we're looking at, and that does include Port Angeles. Um, and I think it's important to note that as we're looking at those sixteen comparable cities, we're looking at cities that are similar in size and permit requirements, and and that's important because those are factors that are considered in the co- overall costs in the budget. And so uh, staff has prepared this by using information that we've received from comparable cities or corresponding utility districts within those cities and the counties that are associated as well for things like property tax and sales tax. Um, we've also collected information from the US Census Bureau and the Department of Health and Human Services, as well as from Department of Revenue um, for the sales tax piece as well, as far as rates. And uh, data is collected from twenty twenty three with current data for the utility property and sales tax information. And so uh, first, looking at our average household income. As of this update, Port Angeles um, does continue to fall within the lower spectrum for comparable cities. Um, in terms of those average household incomes, that's highlighted in gray on the screen at about forty eight thousand five hundred and sixty seven dollars. Looking at the housing costs, uh, those also fall within the lowest um, areas as compared to the other other comparable cities. Uh, Port Angeles residents are paying about twelve thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars on average yearly for our housing costs. And then when we're looking at total utility costs, um, Port Angeles utility costs on average are currently the fourth lowest of our comparable cities. And uh, the proposed changes to the rates presented tonight have also been included here um, as well, and those do change the that overall um, cost to the fifth lowest amongst our comparables. And I do also want to note that the rates um, for all of our comparable cities are current. And so as a result, any changes that they may have planned for their utilities um, are not yet known by the city, and so um, have not been included in the affordability index. So looking at our total um, annual household costs, um, these include costs for housing, property and sales tax and utility costs combined. And it demonstrates that Port Angeles uh, residents are the third lowest in terms of total annual costs um, as compared across those sixteen cities. And so this next slide shows our total percent of the household costs as compared to median household income. And this slide really brings all of the previous numbers together. And so though Port Angeles residents' household costs are amongst the lowest of our comparables, uh, when we compare those costs to the percent of household income used uh, for these expenses, Port Angeles is the fourth highest at forty three percent. And so this just really speaks to the affordability of our community. And so uh, while we have done a great job of keeping our rates very low, especially as compared to um, other cities, our household income affordability to our residents is still a factor. And then uh, just looking at this, we have about fourteen point six percent of our community that's currently receiving some some type of public assistance. And then just looking individually at our utility rate comparisons, we have water and wastewater up on the screen here. Again, in orange, we provided the proposed rates, uh, in green are the current rates. And so for our water utility, we are currently the highest of our city comparables with the wastewater rates uh, currently falling um, kind of in the middle. Um, as compared to those cities, the proposed wastewater rates would increase this to the sixth highest as compared to our index cities. And I just want to note that one of our uh, largest contributing factors to um, those higher utility rates as compared to those other cities um, is is our debt associated with these utilities as well. When we're looking at our electric utility, um, it's the lowest as compared to the other similar cities. And and again, this really speaks to the impact of debt on those rates because the electric utility is largely has very, very little debt as of the time that we pulled this data, and as of twenty twenty five um, will not have any debt. And so it it definitely plays a factor in our ability and our affordability for keeping those uh, rates very low. Um, and then stormwater is the fifth highest of our comparables, but if if you look at the slide there, we are closely aligned to the majority of the cities as far as our our charges. And then uh, finally, we have our solid waste rates, which are the fourth lowest. Um, however, we have included the recycling costs associated with solid waste on the slide as well. Um, and when you look at those combined, Port Angeles rates are actually the lowest of our comparable cities because we do include our recycling rates within those. And so we actually do fall to uh, the lowest on the list. And so just in closing, um, it's very important to consider that though we do have uh, increases projected to the rates, staff does remain dedicated to keep those rates as affordable as possible, or while working around the significant impacts that were felt from the high inflation and the current economics trends by addressing the critical needs of the utility and weighing this with any increases to the budget. And so we recognize that this is crucial to the affordability of our community, and it's something that we're committed to continuing to uh, move forward with. And so we recognize that this is crucial to the affordability of our community and it's something that we're committed to continuing to, uh, move forward with. And so tonight, uh, we are recommending council open the public hearing on the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six water and wastewater utility rate adjustments. That that, uh, public hearing is continued to the October fifteenth meeting, um, that you conduct the first reading of the resolution amending utility fee schedule. And then, uh, I am available for any questions as well as, uh, Jason Jones, who's the city's cost accountant, helped prepare the cost of service analysis. As well as any members of the public works team, um, for, for any questions that council may have. And at this time, I will go ahead and turn that, that time back over to council.
Thank you, Serena. Um, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I probably, I'm just going to use my gavel because it's fun and I have it, but it's better on the farmica than it is on the little base it comes with, so. The public hearing is open if anyone wishes to speak to, um, the, uh, present, the rates, um, that we are currently considering. Um, you can come up and speak at the lectern, um, same rules apply your name and whether or not you're a resident. Anyone wish to speak to this? Um, also, if you're online and wish to speak to utility rates of water and wastewater, this is the time to do that.
Hello, Justin Williamson, city resident. Don't really have anything planned out, but I would just like to say that the Federal Reserve does say that they like to stick inflation at around two percent. And it's amazing to see that we are raising our utility bills higher than two percent and raising our utility bills higher than two percent. Definitely is going to lead to more inflation above two percent. So I think if we want to try and keep our inflation below two percent, then we shouldn't be allowed to raise our utility bills above two percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, um, I will continue the public hearing, which means, um, we will, um, have a continuation of it at the next meeting. Um, and before I go to council discussion, I'd like to take a quick break, um, because it's been a while. Um, so we're going to take a five minute break and we'll come back and have council discussion and then move on to the, um, the next, uh, public hearing. Yeah, it's pregnant. All right. Thank you, everyone. I want to just quickly acknowledge the, um, the high school students in the room who are, um, joining us this evening. Thank you for being here and we're happy to answer questions, um, if you need some, uh, clarification, um, if you want to stick around. So before I open up for council discussion, I will read the resolution. A resolution of the city council of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, amending portions of the city of Port Angeles's utility rate schedule. All right. Comments or questions from council? Go ahead, Drew.
Um, I just had one question with the recent closure of the mill. Do we need to take any of that into consideration when figuring out, uh, rate changes?
Those are kind of separate from the utility rates that you see here. Um, and so they're not factored into what's proposed for water or wastewater on those utilities this time.
Gotcha, because those are handled separately.
Correct.
Okay, cool.
Any other comments or questions from council? Latricia, go ahead.
I just had a question and maybe it was in the information you provided and maybe I just didn't see it. But you referred to it a couple of times about the debt that was keeping us a little bit higher for some of this. Could you kind of elaborate? I mean, where are we at on that? I, I, I'm more, I'm interested in that. Where are we at on paying down the debt?
So water and wastewater still have quite a bit of debt associated with their utilities. Um, and that's kind of demonstrated when we go through the budget on that mountain of debt. Um, so particularly relative to water, or I mean, pardon me, wastewater and the CSO, that's probably one of our highest, uh, debt amounts still left at the city. And so those are being factored into those rates for the, the repayment of the, of the interest and the principal on those. Um, and I think twenty thirty six is the last year for, for both water and wastewater on that debt. We do find savings, we always look at that and that's something we did in twenty twenty and we were able to save, um, about three million dollars associated with that. And so it's, it's something we're able to do every so many years in accordance with our bond covenants and something that we do look at. But as of right now, both of those utilities actually, um, have quite a bit of debt. And so they're being factored, that debt is factored into the rate for repayment.
Okay, that, that's helpful. I mean, having a, a date of twenty thirty six helps us kind of see the end of the tunnel coming, so thank you.
Yeah, I feel like that seems so far away, but I just saw something today with an expiration date of thirty two. Cool, the shell stable. Um, other council members? All right, um, so we will continue this. I don't see any other comments or questions. So we'll continue this item to our October fifteenth meeting, um, and we will move on to, I know, the new item F two. Former item G one, um, which is the municipal code update, uh, minor deviation permits and conditional use permits. And I'm going to go to Calvin for that one.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. You'll find this information in your updated package, starting on page F sixteen. Municipal code update MCA twenty four eighty eight to the Port Angeles municipal code, PAMC. Title seventeen and title two for minor deviation permits and conditional use permits relate to an increase in height standards from thirty five to forty feet in the public buildings and park zone. Movement of conditional use minor deviation standards from chapter seventeen ninety four to chapter seventeen ninety six. And administrative minor deviation increase from ten to twenty percent. And updating hearing examiner decisions on minor deviation applications from twenty one to thirty percent. On September eleventh of this year, the planning commission unanimously recommended the city council adopt the code amendments. Tonight's recommendation is to, one, conduct the first reading of the ordinance amending chapters two point one eight, seventeen point four zero, seventeen point nine four, and seventeen ninety six of the PAMC. Two, open the public hearing. Three, close the public hearing. Four, waive the second reading of the ordinance. Five, adopt the ordinance. And six, authorize the city clerk and code reviser to make any grammatical or formatting revisions to ensure internal consistency. And finally, planning commission, planning supervisor Brodrick is here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Um, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the proposed changes to the municipal code? If so, head on down. If you're online, raise your hand.
Hi, yep. Uh, John Rollston, City of Port Angeles resident. I'm in favor of, uh, what is being proposed. I do have one concern. The quick change from thirty five to forty feet. For all, uh, I think it was public, uh, public, uh, properties, et cetera. And I know the, the, the issue came up because of the requirement or request, uh, of Stevens School construction. Again, I'm not opposed to that, but I don't think that the planning commission was aware of all the potential places that that increase could be applied to, such as Peninsula College, such as other school sites. And other properties within the city of Port Angeles. So I just want, uh, you guys to be cautious and aware of that change that seemed to be made specifically for the concern of the construction at Stevens School. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right. Anyone else? Okay, um, it is a public hearing if anyone wants to address John's. If there's anything to address in John's comment, we, we can do that in this, um, forum. But also we can just open up to council discussion because I don't see anyone else. And Lindsay, you can address it if you want to go first.
Yeah, just maybe a point of clarification or question. We have in the staff memo on page G two, the planning commission recommendation, which I'm, I'm not tracking if that's the ordinance or if, if there's a kind of a recommendation from planning commission and then there's also the ordinance. And, and I think this goes to the, the public comment as well as to like, is that the planning commission's recommendation that we're looking at adopting that we're in today? Are those kind of just separate items here?
Um, my interpretation of that is we have an ordinance that reflects, the changes in the ordinance reflect the recommendations of planning commission. Do you want to confirm my assessment or deny it?
We, we went to planning commission and they had a really robust conversation about some of the proposals that we had for these code changes. And they made changes to, they recommended changes of the code that we have in front of you right now. So those changes are reflected.
Thank you. Um, I'll go ahead and read the ordinance and then we can have council discussion. Oh, actually, quickly, any other comment for public hearing? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Um, I will read the ordinance and then open it up for council discussion. If you want to just stay there in case there are questions, that'd be great. You can sit down if you want, but. Um, an ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, amending portions of title seventeen and title two of the Port Angeles municipal code relating to minor deviation permits and conditional use permits. And for anyone who's following along, you may hear, um, two different page numbers because the body of the packet information is the same. It's been, um, moved to F. So if you are in the new packet, it is, um, the ordinance starts on page F eighteen and the memo starts on page F sixteen. Are there comments or questions from council? Go ahead, Lindsay.
Yeah, sorry for being daft on this, but we have changed chapter seventeen dot forty height requirement from thirty five to forty feet as a planning commission recommendation. But I'm having trouble in the ordinance finding where we're changing seventeen dot forty. I mean, I like it, but I just want to make the change.
Sure. Maybe it's not in our packet. The packet information has only, uh, title seventeen, starting at seventeen point nine, four point zero, six, five. That's what I have. And then in section two, um, amends title two. Um, so hold on. Does that make it, does, uh, though it is not in here, it is one of the recommendations. So maybe, um, to capture that, to be clear about it, that we, you could, um, if you were going to make a motion, um, to adopt the ordinance, including the change to chapter seventeen point four zero public buildings and parks height requirement from thirty five to forty. Just so it's clear, because it doesn't, it isn't, I don't see it in here, so let's just do that. Um, if that's where you were headed.
Yeah, I, I, I definitely want to move these things forward. Um, I don't want to do it in a haphazard way where we're not sure what we just changed though. So I'm thinking about maybe it, it's a multi-step process. I do want to ask, looking at the ordinance that's in front of us, it looks like we're taking this table A. And for people at the packets on G three or PDF page one hundred two.
Or F eighteen.
Or, or F eighteen. Casey, follow all that. Um, and we're moving table A just to a different section, but keeping the content the same. I did some rough geometry, which feel like, I'm glad there's some school staff in the room to help me with this. Um, and if we require, like, a church or other place of worship to have a twenty five thousand square foot parcel, but thirty five foot setbacks on all four sides with a minimum of hundred foot width. They end up having like five thousand, four hundred square foot of buildable space. And I don't know why we're restricting that. So is there a reason we need all these restrictions? Or if it's going into a conditional use process where the hearing examiner or the director of community and economic development would consider the health, safety, welfare and depreciation of neighboring parcels? Couldn't they just say, yeah, this works based on the needs of that building and the needs of the neighborhood? Health, safety, welfare of the community in general? Or do we need to specifically spell out those lot area, lot with yard requirements and lot coverage requirements here?
So that table is there because a conditional use process. So that table is there because a conditional use process allows for deviations? So those deviations can be what the applicant requests? And so that table is there to restrict that request, but it could be amended to be removed and be at the discretion of the director or the hearing examiner.
Do you want to, Calvin, go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor. As we're reviewing this packet, it it does appear that 1740 was not included. And so council, you know, give us a few minutes to see if we can locate the language or continue this to the next meeting as we track down where the mysterious missing code section has gone to.
I have it pulled up if you want me to read the actual exact section.
I guess I'm wondering, and maybe Bill, you can weigh in on this. Can we adopt the ordinance and just use the language I suggested, which is, not that we don't need to look at it, but include and and say, including the change to Chapter 17.40, public buildings and parks, height requirements from 35 to 40, even though it's not in front of us?
So you really need to have the language in front of you to pass it, to include it in the ordinance. So if it if it is somewhere that can be produced, where the council can actually look at it and see that what the language is and approve it, that would be all right. You could do that, and then you could include it in the actual draft later. But I would not recommend passing an ordinance that purports to include some language that you have not actually seen.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Ben, do you have something you can? Can we pull up from Ben's, from the computer where Ben is? You have, are you connected to something? No, just on your phone. Okay.
Mayor Dexter.
Go ahead.
If I can try. So I move to adopt the ordinance. I'm sorry, I move to waive the second reading, adopt the ordinance with the amendment to strike in Section 17.96.050, the chart for conditional uses, striking columns, lot area, lot width, yard requirements, and lot coverage, and put those conditions at the discretion of the director of hearings, examiner, and director of staff to prepare an additional ordinance to adopt the Planning Commission's September 11 recommendations.
Okay, I'm going to call that, motion dies for lack of a second. So we do need an opportunity to move forward, whether that's, we want to table the whole thing and.
Madam Mayor, I move to table the next till next meeting until the item is presented to council.
Okay. Second. Okay, it's not debatable, and you guys are getting all kinds of Robert's rules.
Point of view, I think it's a motion to postpone.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry for sticking there.
No, I think that's an important point. It's been made and seconded, so we can't debate it, so we have to vote on it. But I don't want to debate, but just as a, I'm going to rule in favor that Councilmember Sherman Warren's point is well taken. If we table it, it is not the same as postponing until the next meeting. So just putting that out there for the vote. All those in favor of tabling the motion, please, or tabling that item, please say aye. Opposed? No. Okay. So we're back to where we were.
I move to postpone this vote until next meeting.
Second, okay. All right, so we have a motion to postpone. I don't know if that actually, yep, no. It's not on my, it is. It is, and it is, it is, okay. Any comments or questions on, or any comments on the motion? Patricia, go ahead.
I I just curious, this isn't a timing issue, is it, for? For this?
So the question, your question is if we don't pass any of it tonight, is there anything that gets held up significantly because this, waiting for us to pass this tonight?
There is a minor deviation application that's waiting to move forward.
Okay. But like, they're not going to lose their contractors because we didn't pass everything tonight? Yes, you can't say that. Never mind, I'm not going to hold you to that. That's an unfair question. Okay, so we have that piece of information. Any other questions about it? Okay, so we have a motion to postpone this item until the next meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. The motion passes, so we'll come back and pick up where we left off with the addition of 17.4. Okay. Now. Just make myself a note. Okay, I want to thank our guests for their patience. We are joined this evening by a team from Port Angeles School District, who is here this evening to present to us about the upcoming propositions on the November 5 ballot. So Marty, come on down. If you want to introduce your team, and then once your presentation is over, I can give council some instructions about what, if we want to take next steps.
Thank you. With me this evening, I have Nolan Deuce, which is the Director of Facilities Maintenance, and we also have Steve Methner, a business man in town here, so.
Yep.
So tonight, do I start now? Okay, thank you. So Mayor, council, and staff, thank you for the opportunity to come in front of you this evening. You know, we're looking to take the next step in our 30-year capital plan. And so this evening, we'll give you a brief overview of what will be on the ballot on November 5. Next slide. So we do have two propositions. Proposition 1 is the operation side. This is the EPNO, which the EPNO stands for Educational Programs and Operations. Basically, our operations. Anything that the state does not fund will be funded through our local EPNO. An example of that would be the music program, the athletic program, student support services, and unfortunately, a high percentage of special education. Proposition 2 is our capital side of the work, and that would be a bond to sell in the form of $140 million to address needs at Port Angeles High School, including the Performing Arts Center and Franklin Elementary School. Next slide. Next slide. So the renewal is not a new tax. It's been around since 1960. Every four years, our district comes to the voters and asks for approval of that, and it requires a 50% plus one vote. This would not take effect until the collection year of 2026. And so the one point that I do want to make very clearly this evening, we do have an existing EPNO and an existing capital levy that is funding Stevens Middle School. Neither of these two new taxes would take effect until the the existing two are sunset at the end of the 2025 calendar year. Next slide. So here's what our EPNO funds. Again, athletics, I I hate to say 100%. Nothing's ever 100%, but it's 99.99% of the athletic program. It's 99.99% of the music program. Neither of those two have funding sources from the State of Washington, school nurses, counselors, transportation, and social workers. And the other is special education. That's kind of my pet peeve. Once a child qualifies for special ed services, he or she or they should be funded by the State of Washington. And unfortunately, we're capped at 16% statewide, and we have 20%. So we spent $2 million out of enrichment dollars last year to backfill what the State of Washington is not filling. Next slide. So now we transition into the 30-year plan. Next slide. So when we started this work in 2018, 2019, you know, really spent a lot of time as a new superintendent. I've been here now seven years. It's amazing how time flies when you're having fun. But the three things that came out of the community conversations and also review of all the committee work that has happened for decades in our community would be three things. Maximizing the state dollars. Number two is providing a long-range, performance-based plan. And number three was minimizing the burden on local taxpayers. Next slide. So here, it's hard to see. At least I can't see it from where I'm standing. But the age of our facilities is significant, and this really defines the need for a plan. You can see that Franklin was built originally in 1954, Hamilton in '56, Stevens in '53, Port Angeles High School '53, and then renovated in '78, and then Roosevelt. So with all of the needs that we have across our system, it really defines the need to have a plan and try to execute that plan so we don't fall behind in our capital needs across our community. Next slide. So here's, you know, an illustration of our 30-year plan. And the good news is Phase 1 was funded by our local tax base. We certainly appreciate that. And Stevens Middle School is on time and on budget. Even though we haven't put shovels in the ground, it is occurring. Remember, the five-year capital levy, we're not taking a loan. And so once all the collections have taken place over the first, or over those five years, we will put shovels in the ground and build the school. So Phase 2 is addressing Port Angeles High School and Franklin Elementary School. Phase 3 would be a portion, the remaining portion of Port Angeles High School, Hamilton, and then finally Roosevelt. The one thing I want to draw your attention to on this slide is if you look at Hamilton, we will not be able to get, provided that we can execute each phase by the projection here, we would not be able to address the needs of Hamilton until 2037 based on need and and need of of facilities. And again, that building was built originally in the 1950s. So again, that really defines the need to have a plan and try to execute that plan. Next slide. Fundamentals of Plant, Nolan.
So thanks for having me here tonight. And again, what you're going to get is we're moving to a K568912 school district. We're so, and we're maintaining the cost to do it. Next slide, please. So the first phase was the capital levy. Again, Marty said Stevens, and he's right. We're on time, we're on budget. That's a fantastic school. And and you're going to see it coming up here real quick. We opened the Monroe Field. That was another thing we did with Phase 1. If you haven't been there, Monroe Field, again, is a fantastic facility, nice walking path, and we we made security vestibules for all the elementary schools. Next slide, please. So you can see the new middle school facility. The the new wing is is going to replace the old school. It's going to give us, again, the opportunity to bring the sixth graders up, and it's going to get rid of most supportables district-wide. So it's doing some great things with, for our kids. Next slide, please. But Proposition 2, the bond for the high school. It's, we've got a lot of need at the high school. It's it's aged, it's it's well, it's well-aged. And and there's, it's really tough for security as well. So next slide, please. So here's just two facility, or here's the high school in Franklin. Again, Franklin was built in the the early 50s as well. Franklin has, in my opinion, the biggest need in the district. We've got just, it it's systems. It's not just a little paint here. It's it's not just a little wax. We're talking mechanical system, the the electrical system, the foundations, the the building envelope. All the systems are are really in need at Franklin, as well as the high school. Next slide, please. So what are you going to get? So what you're going to get is all the buildings in blue are going to be replaced. So if you look up at the the buildings, the tall one at the top of the screen, the long one is the 100 building. It's 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 classroom space and admin space. The number, the 200 building is the music building. The 300 is a cafeteria and some special ed. The 400 building is our library and our classroom spaces. The 900 building is the long rectangular building at the bottom of the the other blue buildings. And then 600 building is the science buildings. All of those buildings will be replaced with one building and and a brand-new building on the site. The bronze buildings are going to stay. That's what Phase 2 is going to be. When we can get to them, it's all our vocational spaces in the gym. And the green building is the auditorium. A big part of this project is renewing our auditorium. It's a fantastic space. The acoustics are great. It just has a lot of needs as well. And I like to bring up that ADA wasn't passed until the early 90s. And so when we're building buildings back in the 50s, we didn't have a lot of of accessibility in those buildings. If you've been to a show, you can remember waiting in line in the auditorium for the bathrooms. And then the doors, even for the bathrooms, are 26 inches. So you can't even get a wheelchair in there. So we have a lot of needs at the auditorium, but it's a big part of this project. Next slide, please. And this, the dotted line, it's hard to see, but the dotted line is where we think the new building is going to go.
So this, safety is a key priority of this initiative. And so if you think about a 40-acre campus, which is Port Angeles High School, with 147 exterior doors, and you think about 21st century safety standards, this is not the ideal setup. And so, you know, quite frankly, we have to address, you know, a way to control access to our student body and our staff. And a 40-acre open campus is very difficult to do so.
Next slide, please. And again, the Performing Arts Center, this is a gem of the community. We need to, we need to keep it going. It's a bigger than the field hall by a long shot, and and it allows us to do things. Our whole student body can go inside the auditorium, where it wouldn't fit anywhere else. Next slide, please. And again, next slide, please. Franklin Elementary, again, it's built in 1954, has a lot of needs. And it's it's 70 years old. We've we've come to the end of its useful life, and we do need to replace it. Next slide, please.
Coming back to now estimated tax cost rates. Again, our priorities, we want to maximize the state dollars. We'll demonstrate that to you. We want to keep consistent local tax rates. We'll demonstrate that to you and try to minimize the burden on local taxpayers. Next slide. So here's the summary of the costs associated to the $140 million and what work could be accomplished in our district. So $133.5 million would be allocated to Port Angeles High School, building that one large facility to replace all of the existing structures, as well as $30, $30 million for the Performing Arts Center. Franklin Elementary School would come at a cost of $43 million, bringing our total of $176.5 million across our district to be invested in our schools. When we do have a local commitment, we also open up and qualify for state grants. That grant would be in the form of $36.5 million, so bringing the total cost associated to this work locally to $140 million. Next slide. So you remember, we came out here in 2018, 2019, well, 2019, 2020, and we had this slide, and I want to bring that around to, did we deliver? So you remember, we talked about a combined tax rate of $4.12. And that was $1.50 for the EPNO, and that was $2.62 for the capital. Did we deliver? Next slide. So there, you can see the rates associated by year, and each progressive year, that rate has lowered. And so that's one side of the tax, tax consideration, which is the district establishing a reasonable rate and carrying that forward to provide consistency to our tax base. Next slide. So here is win, loser, draw this election on November 5. The one thing I want our our board and our school community to be recognized for is, you know, we have reestablished that that cap rate of $2.70 now. We could come back five years from now, or five years ago, and say, hey, we established that 412 and bring it back up to 412. We're not asking for that. We are now reestablishing that 270 rate moving forward to, again, provide the consistency to our tax base. Next slide.
Steve?
So I I speak to you as a member of the Capital Facilities Committee for the school district, which I've been on for most of my adult life, it seems like. But the district and the committee have made a strong effort at at keeping promises. So when the when the community So when the, when the community said yes to school renewal in twenty twenty and a rate went on the books for people who own property in town, the promise was to maintain that rate and not ask for more, but to work within that budget. And I'm happy to tell you that if you ask yourself the question, if you could have a all new instructional building at Port Angeles High School, New Franklin Elementary, a major remodel on the Performing Arts Center, all without paying any additional taxes, would you do that? And that's really the question we're hoping voters will ask themselves because that plan is working. Worst case scenario, and this was before the Federal Reserve lowered the federal funds rate recently. Worst case scenario was that the average homeowner would have a potential change of about forty two dollars between now and twenty twenty nine in their property tax. It, we're probably going to ask for some revised numbers after downward pressure on interest rates federally. But the main point is taxes are incredibly consistent. And the district is working very hard to work within the budget that, that the taxpayers gave the district in twenty twenty. So really the, the message is to emphasize that this is not an additional tax. This is a replacement of tax that's going away. It's part of a thirty year plan that's working quite well. And as Marty said, it's on time and it's on budget. And when, when budget increases have come along, I'm happy to say Marty and Nolan and the district have found ways to the tune of about twelve and a half million dollars most recently to reduce the scope of the project to fit within what the taxpayer said was okay. So this will be very, very similar to what taxpayers paid in twenty twenty three. As you can see, in twenty twenty three, twelve hundred and fifty dollars was the average. In twenty twenty four, it actually goes down. And it's several years before it even reaches the twenty twenty three rate again for the average taxpayer. So this is a real thing and this is the message that, that the, the committee and the district were given was here's your rate, stay within your budget. And I'm very happy to say that's exactly what the plan is providing. So it shouldn't be an additional burden at all, unlike many other things that are going up.
And again, this chart represents about a half percent increase in or additional cost around what it would take to bond at this point in time. So we do project it that all of these rates will be lower when we actually sell bonds. Next slide. So here's just a real simple rendition of, of what there's, there's this misunderstanding in the community that when your home goes up by thirty percent or forty percent or fifty percent, that the school district collects thirty, forty or fifty percent more taxes. This demonstrates why that doesn't work. We have a fixed number. When we file a resolution with the county, we have a fixed number for our EPNO and a fixed number for our bond. We can't exceed that. And so as your home values go up across the community, the rate drops. That's why that's one side of the conversation. So you have that as well as the total resources out of pocket. So here you can see that if a home is built in our community as new construction, it reduces the tax burden for all of us. Next slide. So again, it passed proposition one, which is our EPNO, which is operations would fund enrichment programs across our district and special education. Proposition two would authorize our district to sell a hundred and forty million dollars in bonds to address Port Angeles High School, Performing Arts Center, and also Franklin Elementary School. Next slide. And finally, this is my favorite slide. This is real progress. You know, when we started this work in, you know, decades ago, we had needs around us that were substantial. If, if we can execute this next phase of the plan, twenty twenty eight looks very different in our community. We would have a brand new Stevens Middle School open and, and available to our students and our community. Port Angeles High School would have a major, major renovation and replace most of the buildings at Port Angeles High School with the exception of the CTE buildings and the gymnasium. And then the Performing Arts Center would have a complete makeover. And finally Franklin Elementary School. And that's fall of twenty twenty eight. It's only a few years away. So real progress and reinvestment into the capital needs of the, the school community. Next slide. And we will entertain any questions you might have.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the thorough presentation. Some of those slides looked familiar, only the arrows moved a little bit. So time marches on. When you said you've been here seven years, I didn't realize that Lindsay and I started the same year. On council, the same year you started at the district. So so council, in the past, we have with school district propositions, taken a position in favor. We don't, there's no, we don't have to do that. It's just something we've done. If that's something that council wants to consider, we would tonight need a motion to direct staff to bring back a resolution in favor for consideration at our next meeting so that we can have public comment on it before we, before we vote. Go ahead, but also they're here for questions if anyone has any.
I was just going to say so moved.
Second, all right. So we can have discussion about the motion and also if there are questions for the folks here. First question I have, I have, I don't usually go first, but would one or two of you be willing to come back to our next meeting in case there are questions at that time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for them? Okay. Well, we know where to find you and the, the presentation that they just gave is in the packet, which is online if anyone wants to go look at it and see those slides again. So we have a motion to direct staff to bring back a resolution in support of proposition one and proposition two to our October fifteenth meeting. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. So the motion passes.
Just to clarify that there's a requirement for equal time for and against that before we take a vote on that action.
Right. So this is just directing staff to bring a resolution and then we will consider it on our agenda at the next meeting. So people can come and speak in favor of the resolution or in opposition before we vote, as Lindsay said. So thank you very much for being here tonight. Thanks for the good work. And all right. I have a second page of my agenda. Let me find it. But I think we're at the end of, I think we're at council reports. And let's do council report. Well, let's just see. Let's just start council reports and we'll see how far we are. And let's start with Brendan.
All right. Awesome. Got a little bit of stuff. We, Cloud Transit, we went ahead and put the fees, changed the fee structure to represent our zero fare policy change that happened at Clough Transit. So it was started last year as a private program. And now we've, we've made it part of the fee structure for Cloud Transit. So now it's zero fare for the continuous, continuous for the foreseeable future. And if funding changes for that, then something might have to change, but for the foreseeable future, it is that way. And then another brief thing too, is that the chamber is having their job fair this month. So on October twenty third, ten AM to one PM, they'll be having the job fair. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Amy, go ahead.
Thank you. First, I would like to mention that this was brought to me by one of our neighbors that was in attendance earlier and wanted it to be put into public record. So I will hand that over to the clerk. Last couple of weeks, I don't think I did much council work. I was able to attend a fundraiser for Taffy, the answer for youth. And we have some pretty neat projects going on. So if you're interested in supporting that organization, I would encourage you to take a look at that. I attended the Recovery Bash, which was held here in Vernon Burton, where most of our resources came together in one place. And that was heartwarming. Thank you, Clallam Transit. That's awesome to have the Zero Fair continue. I think that's a huge deal. And just wanted to also extend a thank you to our organizational neighbor for letting us have our comprehensive plan public meetings in his facility and with, with ThorPA. Thanks.
Thank you, Navara.
Well, I was sick for a good chunk of last week, but I, not with COVID, I will say. But I did attend lodging tax, obviously, which we talked about at length, so I won't continue on. But I will say, because we are talking with our, about, you know, at some point, the boards and commissions suggestions will come back to council. And I will say that lodging tax does not have a vice chair. It only has a chair. And so it might be worth looking at some of those other elements of how meetings run and how our boards are set up. That it is statutorily that the chair of lodging tax committees is the city council member or the municipality's representative. But there is no provision for a vice chair, which means that anytime there's a meeting, I have to be there, sick or not. So I think it's worth mentioning as we continue to move forward and look at some of those nuances and those wonky policy decisions that the state has made for us.
Thank you. Lindsay, go ahead.
I, I will share that at that Taffy fundraiser, Amy Miller and I sat with another Amy Miller in town and got to hear all the things that people complained to their city council members about when they think they're talking to their city council member. We of course hear those things directly ourselves, but it's interesting to get the take of, of a community member who you know, is asked to fix potholes or, you know, those sorts of things as well. By the way, city staff fix potholes. You can direct your, your pothole request to city staff. I was off most of the last week. I went on a road trip to the Housing Washington Conference where I spoke in my work capacity. But it was a great conference. It's sponsored by the Housing Finance Commission, Department of Commerce, Washington State Low and Housing Alliance, which we should become a member of. And, and I think one of the take homes that is worth sharing here was a presentation on bringing modular housing to scale. And one of the things that one of the speakers emphasized was when you do housing construction, it's all projects. Every, every site built house is a project. And modular housing today is kind of just site built houses done in a building. They're all kind of to project phase and they're not really getting the economy of scale that comes with going to the manufacturing process where you create a product rather than a project. And yeah, I think there's some thoughts in our community about trying to make modular housing happen at scale produced here. And for that to happen, we need to get very clear, I think as the city of Port Angeles, as Clallam County, as the other cities here, and even probably statewide with the rules that we have that streamline it so that the products produced at scale in a facility producing modular housing are able to be used in multiple different jurisdictions. One of the problems with getting modular housing to become a manufacturing product rather than a in building construction process then moved out to the site is that local governments have so many different minutia rules on things that make it very hard to create one product and streamline it. I'm a huge fan of local self governance. I also see in housing how much it's a restriction on being able to bring things like modular housing to scale. So I think for us in Port Angeles, we've been kind of at the forefront of adopting different standards for recreational park trailers as resident, as, as dwelling units and other things. But if we can keep pushing that, it's going to be helpful, not just for housing here, but also for the hopeful manufacturing process that people are looking at with, you know, building modular housing here locally. So a lot more in the Housing Washington Conference, more connections on how we're looking at affordable housing development in a place like Port Angeles. But happy to have those conversations with anyone who wants to nerd out on housing more. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew.
Yeah. So last week I went to session three of the Washington Collaborative Electoral Leaders Institute Session, WASELI. This one was in Everett last Friday and Saturday. Session four is actually right now. They alternate between online and in person. So I had a Zoom session today and there'll be a Zoom session tomorrow as well. And then later this month will be our last in person one until June of next year. And that will complete all of the sessions for the Electoral Leaders Institute. This week I also have the Olympic Peninsula Tourism Commission Board Meeting as well. Will be the other thing. And something that I just realized that I'm pointing out in open session, so I don't forget. But the scheduled board commission code review subcommittee meeting scheduled for the seventeenth at one PM. I will most likely have to attend either remotely using a cell phone because I will be traveling to the WASELI thing for Friday. And that's all I have for this time.
Thank you, Drew. Latricia.
I attended the William Short Memorial Pool Meeting. We just talked budgets, that one childcare, we're not, they're not able to open up the childcare as fast as they thought they could because of some funding. And then also attended the, on the twenty fifth, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee Meeting. And I was just looking at that, you know, there, there was some pretty hearty discussion. There was a presentation by Roundigan about a proposal about a new facility that this concept that he's talking about. But one of the things that he needs is land for it. And I, I don't know, I don't want to, but that is one of the things. And I'm sitting here thinking, well, I wonder if that's a partnership thing that, you know, some entity jurisdiction can do to work with him because recycling is a major issue, not here just for the Olympic Peninsula, but for the whole nation as a whole. One of the hardest things to recycle are plastics. They're just kind of building up because sometimes you get dirty plastics in with clean plastics and then you can't recycle all those plastics. And then you've got this code and certain plastics are recyclable, certain plastics aren't recyclable. And then you got this misnomer that you have this, this, this symbol on your plastics with a number in the middle. And you just automatically think, oh, there's a number in the middle. It must be recyclable. We'll just throw it in and let the city of Port Angeles staff figure out what to do with it and stuff. And that's not a solution either. But I bring this up because I attended the Film Festival in Gig Harbor this last Friday. And at, at that I was there to, they were showing the film, The Last Stand, Saving the Elway River's Legacy Forest. And so I was able to kind of get up and talk about, you know, things that we're trying to do out here. But they also showed another movie that I learned a lot from called Reinventing Recycling. The director is Jay Windland. It's about thirty nine minutes long, but it talks about the US recycling system teetering on the point of collapse and a global plastic pollution crisis. You know, and, and so, but at the very end you had these, they worked in Colorado at the National Laboratory there. And one of the messages from these very brilliant young folks that were working to tear apart all the molecules, break them down so that you can reuse them for something completely different. That's not a plastic. I, it was pretty amazing. And, and so I guess one of their messages, kind of a mixed message is plastic isn't all bad. Because when you have to create new plastics to mix it in with the old plastics, that's deteriorating. You're still using a lot of oil to make those new plastics and, and stuff. So but I encourage everybody to, if you can watch this movie, it's called Reinventing Recycling. Again, the director is Jay Windland. It's one word, but two words together, wind and land. It's a great thirty minute documentary about, you know, the US recycling system. So what this movie talked about is the same things that here on the So what this movie talked about is the same things that here on the Olympic Peninsula that we're facing. And it's one thing that I always advocate for is that we need to put pressure on the people who are creating and packaging products that we are buying, that it needs to be sustainable products, packaging products. And so, so this is, you know, kind of one of the focus of the of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, because one of the things, you know, that that we're looking at, let me go back to the agenda, is, you know, that the solid waste management plan, discuss Chapter Nine, Miscellaneous Solid Waste Recommendations, you know, continually updating it. And there are partners that are just trying to figure out how to deal with the problem. But the presentation by Roundigan, the gentleman, and how he talks about how trying to manage the waste, I don't know, might be a good presentation here so people in the community know really the efforts that are being made. So I just really wanted to to bring that about and it it doesn't get as much airtime as it should i- and attention, because our solid waste problem here on our Olympic Peninsula is a big issue, so. I also want to say too that I've been busy with moving my daughter to Central. So so along with other staff and people that I work with too, we're all moving our children off to to college. So so that also took a bit of my time and I got to visit Ellensburg, I hadn't been there for a long time. And I want to point out, Ellensburg is also facing a drought condition out there. And in their papers that they're reporting, and they're reporting that grape irrigators have opted not to irrigate large sections of their grape crops because they don't have enough water to fully, for their needs. And I'm going to bring that back to, the Elway River currently is only running at 230 CFS, which is significantly low for our community. Again, I, we have a water crisis here, our drought declaration is a continuation from the year before. I kind of refer to it as a continuing resolution drought declaration. It never stopped. And then I'm going to point out the Dungeon Ness River is at a a low of 72 CFS, and it might be that the irrigators out there are just going to have to shut every, all irrigation off here pretty soon if it gets down to even further than that. So we are only at the beginning of October and I don't see big rains coming in 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 the future, so this may last for another month. So please, everybody be conservative with your water uses. Some of my pumpkins are probably not going to grow any longer, we'll be picking them now to to save them, but yeah, so please be conservative with your water, we are still in a huge drought declar- area out here, so. Thank you for that time, thank you.
Thank you. I will be brief and just say, if, I I don't know if all of council got an email or not, but if you didn't, I wanted to just make sure you all know that MRSC has hired a new executive director, Melanie Harding, who comes to us from the city of Tacoma. And I'm a board member on MRSC and we had some great candidates and I think she's going to do a great job moving us forward and keeping us relevant and keeping our budget up and doing all, being able to do all the good things that we do for cities and counties and other municipalities in the state of Washington. And I will turn it over to Nathan.
Mayor and council, a few items for you this evening. Some unfortunate news that actually has a bit of a nexus to Councilmember Suggs' report relative to recycling is that Strategic Materials, who has been our vendor in Seattle relative to glass recycling, has been providing to a bottle manufacturer who has recently shuttered, which eliminates that potential source. So Strategic Materials at this point is no longer taking glass, so we are going to be going back and taking a close look at next steps and what we can do to rectify that situation and get glass recycling back on track. So look forward to future updates there. I want to say a huge thank you to the CED team who worked hard at the Comprehensive Plan effort last week, the storefront workshops, and the fact that they worked hard to get dozens of individuals participating and weighing in on the Comprehensive Plan update. And hopefully all of you have had an opportunity to see some of those graphics and details coming into city council chambers this evening or during breaks this evening, and if not, get a chance to do so right after the meeting, take a look at some of what was created through that process. And then council, finally, I do want to share, we do have a scheduled work session for October 22nd, which is from 5 p.m. to 7 p.m., which will be to discuss the 2025 budget, which we're looking forward to. Council, thank you so much.
Thank you, Nathan. All right, that brings us to our second public comment period. If you are joining us online and wish to make a public comment, now is the time to raise your virtual hand. And if you are in council chambers and wish to make a public comment, you can go ahead and come on down. And you'll just state your name and whether or not you're a resident of Port Angeles, and then you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Elaine Stevens, I am a resident of Port Angeles, I currently live at Lee Plaza. We're having a parking issue, we are, all 95% of us are handicapped or disabled and we are not allowed to park on the street. We're asked to park 500 to 800 yards away and to walk to your front door 800 yards when you're disabled is kind of hard. So we're trying to see if maybe we can do something about it where we can get parking on the street where it's legal and not being ticketed, because we're, I recently, within the last six months, had seven tickets for parking on the street. I've paid every one of them, of course, or I had one or two dismissed, but it's really hard for a disabled person to park in the parking lots around Port Angeles and try to make it with your groceries or your, whatever you have to, even just your purse or whatever, to get to the door. And we just need some help. That's what we're here for, because, and the bicyclers are not being ticketed either, are being asked to get off the sidewalk for getting run over when there's a bicycle lane. That's basically what we wanted to say, so I'm here for everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Stephen, go ahead.
Stephen Playo, I own a couple of businesses here in Port Angeles. I'm here to provide some feedback and also express some concerns regarding the Comprehensive Plan process thus far. On a positive note, it was encouraging to see that the two hopes, the top two hopes for Port Angeles citizens were economic growth and downtown revitalization. I urge council and staff to focus on these areas going forward. The troubling signs for me were some things like conflicting data. Some of the posters out here said we needed 1,500 homes by 2045. Our housing action plan said we need 3,000 homes by 2030. So these inconsistencies just kind of caused me to distrust any of the the city data. And then in terms of lack of local knowledge, I asked the consultants, what do they think the impact of the plan is of 1,000 homes being built in Squim and Carlsberg? They said, we didn't know that. So this lack of awareness is also concerning to me. And then I asked even the simple question was, when we look at the 2016 plan, where did we overachieve, where did we underachieve? Again, blank stares. So this makes, again, once again, hard to trust that we're learning from our past experiences. The bottom line is that I'm repeatedly asking that our Comprehensive Plan be used as a catalyst for change. But what we've seen so far, it seems like it's a little bit more routine, a little bit more of a checkbox exercise that's being led by outside consultants. So we need real change agents here, not just people punching in and punching out. So I urge you to really think about the significant impact of your decisions or any lack of those decisions. Port Angeles really does need people investing in its revitalization, I want to support them. The second topic I want to share with you is some real-time, on-the-ground data points, call it my citizen report. Colleen at EDC says that there are 900 unfilled jobs in Clough County. What concerns me is that eight of the 10, top 10 employers here are really tax-funded entities. So I'm really focused on the private sector jobs here. And, you know, what we've seen with McKinley and First Aid, First Fed layoffs and Big Lots and Rite Aid. As a result, I started a meeting with some of the private businesses. So I had a meeting with Westport Marine last week, you know, at their peak, they employed 500 people in Port Angeles. Today, they're less than a tenth of that, they're at 45. What struck me is that they have jobs available, no experience, entry-level job openings, $26 an hour with full benefits, yet they're struggling to find candidates. A lot of people can't pass the drug tests, but in fact, they recently extended job offers to six people. And this was after doing interviews, after doing background checks, after doing drug screens. Two candidates accepted, one showed up for orientation and then quit that later on that day. So this just shows you the struggle that's going on. It's a lot more, and the hiring manager said the problem is today's instant gratification culture is creating a poor work ethic, his response. Lastly, I just want to mention on housing here, another observation here, we know this rumblings of 1,200 new homes coming to Squim and Carlsberg, let me just finish this point. The Port Angeles Realtors Association is saying this is the highest time we've had for housing for sale listings in a number of years. So we're at 260 homes listed right now, so it is good in terms of purchasing. But I will also remind you that from an affordable housing perspective, it was interesting for me to hear that the Habitat for Humanity fourplex is struggling to find applicants. It's focused on veterans, they've now opened it up to widows of veterans, childrens of veterans. So if you know anybody, get some applications in for that type of affordable housing.
Thank you.
In conclusion, let me just say, let's take
Thank you.
John Rawls, John Rawls, can I yield some of my time to Mr.?
Doesn't work that way.
Not legal?
No, it doesn't work that way.
Thank you.
Nice try, though.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I appreciate your creative problem solving.
So again, I'm going to keep harping on bicycle lanes. So best development practices, provide networks for pedestrians and bicyclists as good as the network for motorists. Other one, provide pedestrians and bicyclists with shortcuts and alternatives to travel along high-volume streets. So I, on Saturday and Sunday, I was kind of looking at how many vehicles were parking on 8th Street between Lincoln and Cherry, and there were regular numbers that were in the teens, and I'm talking on the north side of the street. Seventh Street is an excellent alternative. And talking about the meetings you had down at the 4PA Building, which I attended two of them. You know, the bicycle lanes that are, most of them that are in town are not separated from traffic, so I think those that use them get a false sense of security. As I was going into one of those meetings, here's a person going down 1st Street in a westerly direction, no brakes on their bicycle and using their feet to slow them down. I I don't think that's a wise choice for that person, and that's also not a wise thing for us to have a bicycle lane there. Other items I'm going to bring up is still the emergency center. Certainly need something, we're at 20 million now. I suspect it'll be somewhere in the in the $30 million range, if not more. There are good alternatives, and I've mentioned it here a number of years, I've mentioned it to the county commissioners a number of years. I still think you shouldn't be afraid from walking away and starting over. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? All right, seeing nobody else, there's nobody online, I mean, there are people online, but no hands, we are adjourned, thank you all very much.